Stuff for Jeff Reynolds.
I will do the same, call this waiting to order and Kathy, Val, the attendants.
Good deal. All right, don't stand for the foot.
My intentions to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, and the invisible, of the under to the unjust justice for all.
We said it's okay.
I'll fill it, take care of it. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is to receive information regarding the PUC's rate study. And with that, I will turn it over to Manager Butcher and Blair, thank you.
I'm sorry, did we do an approval of the agenda? Did we need to do that?
No, it's, yeah, we, we don't do that for this part of it. Study sessions are super, super laid back, so.
Mr. Chair, is that okay?
It's okay with the connection.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thanks, everyone. You know, when it comes to rates, everybody's ears always perk up. So, and electricity in particular is a very complicated industry. And really, the fundamental reason for it is because you can't store electricity. That means is whenever anybody plugs into the, into the socket on the grid, there has to be a corresponding increase in supply. So, supply and demand always have to match 24 hours a day, every second of the year. Otherwise, the whole thing could potentially collapse. So, we do a lot of work just managing both supply and demand. What that does is because you can't store it, we can't just put it in the warehouse and wait until somebody needs it and bring it out. We make, we have to make investments in infrastructure. And having a rate structure that reflects how this industry works can get complicated. And so, I know it's of interest, it's always of interest to folks, their like, their energy rates. That's why I thought it'd be a good topic for everybody here to come in, get some, a good foundation for what it is we do, why we do it. And then, as we look into the future, where do we want to go as a community? Like I said, it is complicated. When we get into the weeds a little bit, hopefully not too much, I'm going to take the first half of the presentation, give you basically a 101 on electricity. And then Blair's going to come in and do the rate study. So, with that. Thank you. So, like I said, I'm going to take the first half, Blair's going to do the second half. What I'm going to go through is basically tell you how we got here. This isn't a kind of a one and done meeting. This is part of just a larger scope, ongoing discussion that the Commission has been having and that the Commission will continue to have. So, I'm going to go through the timeline a little bit, just so we all know where we're at in that process. Like I said, I'm going to be using some words, Blair's going to be using some words that you might not be completely familiar with. So, I'm going to go through some definitions, try to explain to you what those words mean, because they are important in terms of why rates get structured the way they do. We are an all-source requirement through Simpa. So, their billing system, what we see on the wholesale market, obviously impacts what we have to do on the retail side. So, it's important for everybody here to understand how the Simpa billing works, what it looks like, what are the factors that drive those in terms of our costs? And then, we're going to start looking at what are our challenges today? And as those challenges evolve, what do we think that means for future rate designs? Not just for today in 2022, and not just for next year in 2023, but what is this thing going to look like 10 years from now? Because the whole industry is evolving more and more. There's a lot of reasons for that. And I'm going to try to give you, again, high level, so you can understand all things that are impacting the decisions that we at the utilities have to make and things that the Commission's going to be talking about for the next several years. And then Blair's going to go through the actual rate study stuff that he did, why those are important, why, what are the key drivers for a lot of that? His general conclusions, how we think that we probably want to address those going forward, and then do some comparisons with, with current structures versus new structures. And then, I know he's got some things there, too, that, things that we don't currently have addressed within our systems. And just put it on the table as things that we might want to talk about in the future. Well, again, kind of put this in context in terms of a timeline. Where the, a lot of this really started was back in 2020. The Commission began discussions about conducting a long-term electric infrastructure plan. And that was really because of the age of some key equipment. We have some transformers that are well beyond our useful life. And the transformers that I'm talking about are at the substation. These are the big ones, the ones that cost you a million and a half to $2 million a piece. They're expensive. They can run for a long time, but when it's time to replace them, you're talking about major infrastructure. The nice thing is Princeton Public Utilities is very well-suited, because we are currently in the, in the stages of paying off some of our old bonds. The Commission approved that a couple of months ago. We, we finished off some of those. From a utility perspective, once you pay off those bonds, it doesn't mean it's, hey, party time, everything's free. You've used up your asset. So, now it's time to start that cycle over again. And we wanted to do a long-term capital investment plan, figure out, okay, for the next 10 years, what does that mean? How do we make sure that, yes, the lights are on today, but we want to be on five years from now and 10 years from now? We don't want to get ourselves into a hole. And so, we want to keep that investment in the infrastructure. And so, that was in August. We did some work, and then in December of 2020, the Commission contracted with DGR Engineering to develop that 10-year capital plan for our electric distribution systems. And then, so we started working with DGR to do the engineering, to do the analysis, to figure out what it is we need to do. And those results were, are, and so, we worked with DGR on that, not Blair. We were working with Andy Koo on the engineering staff and a lot of other good people there. As we were starting to internally, to start to understand kind of where we're going and the kind of level of investments we're looking at, we started having a conversation at the Commission about doing an electric rate study. Because again, we knew we were going to have to make some major investments in our infrastructure. Obviously, the next question is how do you pay for it? And it's complicated enough where you really want to have some expertise looking at that. It's not something I just wanted to make up. I wanted to have somebody really look into it, make sure we do this the right way. So, it was at that time, we contracted with DGR. And actually, there were a lot of synergies there, because they were doing the engineering work. Blair and Andy talked internally all the time, along with Stan as well. So, they all, as we were kind of adjusting and making changes, we were able to incorporate that into the rate study as well. So, there was a lot of, a lot of synergies. And then, in December, was when DGR presented that capital improvements plan, which consists of three phases of construction over the next 10 years, with an estimated cost of $11.7 million, which the Commission has given us the green light on, and we are moving forward with phase one of that. And then, so we started, we started working on getting the engineering work done on phase one. Blair and I have been working on the rate study side of things. Again, it's complicated, so him and I have been having a lot of conversations over the last several months, and that brings us to today. So, this is the first time that Blair and I are getting in front of a group of people and saying, here's kind of where we're at, here's what we've been thinking, here's where the data's taking us. This is the first time that the Commission has seen this, just so the Council is aware. So, this is that, this being a work session, this was our opportunity to present information to everybody, be transparent in what we're doing, show you what we're thinking. It, the decisions that will eventually need to be made on rates, it's going to take time as we work through different options, as the Commission, you know, pressure checks some of the assumptions perhaps, and just making sure that they're comfortable with it. So, they're seeing it just like you are right now, and it's meant to start that conversation. This is not the final opportunity to talk about this, it will be ongoing. So, just kind of keep that in mind. This is, we're not presenting, hey, this is what it is, and the work is done. We're still in the process of a long-term, multifaceted approach to make sure that we're serving our community in best way we can. So, let's start with some definitions. Again, not everybody here is an engineer. So, let's explain the difference between power and energy, because in electricity, that's very important. Those are the two primary components that you see in any electric bill. Energy is measured in kilowatt-hours, and demand or power is measured in kilowatts. Those are two different things. Energy is the work that is done, how, you know, how do you accomplish something? Power is an instantaneous measurement of the max capacity of that. So, there's a couple of analogies people use. First is, you know, a water bucket. Flow rate of water, that's your power. So, whether you're comparing a fire hose to a leaky faucet, both of them are different levels of power. Obviously, the fire hose, because of water pressure, gives more force, that's your power. Both of them are moving water, and they would fill up a bucket, and the water that's in that bucket, they both fill it up. Now, the fire hose would do it faster, because there's more power there. But if you're filling the same-sized bucket, it's the same amount of energy. It's just that the fire hose is quicker, because it's more power, but it's the same amount of energy. Another example is, is a car. Energy is the gasoline, power is the engine, which is typically measured in horsepower. Bigger engines, which give you more power, that allows you to drive faster, to have bigger touring capacities, they will cost more. And they can, they can use more gasoline or energy per minute. However, those are two different components, and small cars can actually consume more gasoline than larger cars can, if they're driven more. So, just because you have a little bit of power, you can still have a lot of energy associated with it. It's that dichotomy that, that's important to understand as we keep moving forward. The other thing that is going to be important for people to understand is load shape. And what load shapes are, is the changes in power needs over time. So, I have an example here up on the top left, which is, comes from a study. The data's not important. What, what I wanted to have you visualize is the variations that you see. This came from a study that was done on electric water heaters, looking at the hourly load shapes of 45 different case studies. You can see it's all in that. Customer A might be using it at 5:00 a.m., customer B might be using it at 7:00 p.m. And everybody's doing it at different times. But in the aggregate, what you do is you come up with an average load shape for that technology, and that's what the red line is. So, even though when we talk about load shapes, and they look like this nice predictable line, behind the scenes, a hornet's nest. But on average, and you're going to see that a lot, on average, it all works out. Because some people turn on, other people turn off. And what we do is we try to manage that in the aggregate. And so, when you get into load shapes, those vary by end-use, those vary by customer type, those even vary by regions. And so, the bottom right is an example of different regions of what an average hourly electric load looks like for residential customers. And you can see the seasonality differences, you can see the regional differences. But ultimately, what you need to keep in mind is that each customer has a unique load shape. Everybody's different. But in the aggregate, there's an average. And on that average, we can design a system to meet the system load, even with all that variability. This is my love, my industry, just so you know, it's fascinating. So, when you look at it in the aggregate, that's our goal as a utility, is how do we meet the community's needs? And what you're seeing here is just a snapshot from July 20th of outputs that I get from, from Simpa. I could sit and monitor Princeton's load every second of the day if I want to. And these are measured at the substation. And you can kind of see how loads are low early in the morning, and then they peak in the mid to late afternoons, and then come back down in the evenings. And you can see the, the power demands here fluctuate a little bit. These are three-minute readings. And then, looking at a megawatt-hour basis for each hour of the day, just so you can see kind of how the load shapes trend. Behind the scenes, this is what we do. We look at this stuff, and we try to understand what's going on. And if these numbers start getting up into this region, and this is much higher, and if this gets up in here, that's when I set out my beat the peak alerts, which you may or may not be familiar with. Because what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to address that peak usage that I'm seeing come through the substation. So, there's a lot of data analytics that we use to manage the load. And so, the other number, the other, another term that you're going to hear Blair talk about is load factor. Well, load factor is, is, it's a percentage. It's a ratio of the actual energy that a piece of equipment that a customer uses, divided by the amount of energy they would have used had they just turned the equipment on and left it on for a full year. So, for example, if you have a 100-watt light bulb, and you're running that 24 hours a day, that light bulb is going to use 876 kilowatt-hours in a year. And if you actually do leave it on 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, that means it has a load factor of 100%. It's nice and flat. So, if you think of those graphs I just showed you with the peakiness, this is flat. Now, from a utility perspective, it's easy. Okay, all I do is turn on a generator, I just let it run. I don't have to modulate it, I don't have to do anything. I love it. Nobody lives their life that way. That's the problem. Everybody wants to go to bed and work and turn on the air conditioner when it's hot and just mess up the system. So, we start looking at load factors. If you take that same light bulb, and you only run it for 12 hours a day, it would only use 438 kilowatt-hours per year, and 438 divided by 876 is 50%. So, that's what load factor means. The key takeaway, if you want to ignore all those numbers, is high numbers are good, low numbers are bad. If you have a very hot, if you have a very low load factor, it means you're peaky. It means you turn something on, and then you turn it off, and you don't use it. What does that mean for me? What that means for me is the transformer that I have to put in place to serve that customer has to be the size to meet their peak load. But I'm not recovering any cost for remainder of the year. So, I have to get it all in that one hour, in a worst-case scenario. And that gets problematic as well. So, you start looking at, when you start looking at rates, that's what we're talking about, is those demand numbers drive a lot of our infrastructure costs. But those infrastructure costs are not necessarily recovered through the remainder of the year. So, how do you do that? What's an appropriate allocation of revenues in that case? The other thing that we're going to be talking about is MISO and LMPs. MISO, just like Princeton buys power from Simpa, who's in essence our wholesaler, MISO is kind of the traffic cop that controls the electric grid in our region. They operate the transmission system in a centrally dispatched-type model. And they go through 15 states in the Midwest style. They go into Michigan, Indiana, Montana, from the Canadian border to the southern extremes of Louisiana. The system is really operated through three control systems. I can't see my notes, but that's okay. Carmel, Indiana is one of them, Eagan, Minnesota is another. I forget where the third is at. There's a MISO North, which is the blue area, see here, MISO Central, and then MISO South, if I remember the three extensions pretty much. As you can see, we're more in the MISO North. What MISO does, modern technology, because I can look at this every second of the day here, is they will tell me my LMP prices, the hub prices that I see. When colors are blue, purple, and very purple, prices are low. When you start getting up into the yellows and oranges and reds, prices are really high. Reason you see these gradations across the MISO grid is usually because of transmission constraints. This is why we are always talking about transmissions. We want to get the cheap stuff to the more expensive areas and try to help balance some things out. These price signals that you see in the wholesale market are meant to encourage or discourage generation of paying on and off the system. Generators don't want to go on the system if they're going to lose money. So, you, you set up the LMPs and you use those to help regulate it, rather than using a heavy, heavy stick of regulations. You send market signals. But when, when you're running into constraints, and those LMPs shoot up, then everybody who is participating in the market, which is all of us, can see our prices go up. And it's, it's referred to as LMPs, which are localized marginal pricing. And really, the way I think of it is, it's your cost of entry into the grid. If you have a generator and you want to get onto the grid, you have to pay an LMP. And if you're a user, and you want to take energy off the grid, you have to pay an LMP. And from Simpa's perspective, they have both. They have generation, and they have us as customers. If the generation LMP is lower than the purchase LMP, they're hedging. They're helping us hedge our costs, and that's a good thing. If the generator LMPs are higher than what you're using as a, as a user, you want to take that generation offline, because it's cheaper for you to buy it off of them, to grid it that way. So, Simpa manages all that, super nice. But those LMPs, the reason I'm mentioning it, and I do have a reason not to just confuse everybody, is because of this graph. What that graph is, is it shows you the LMPs over the last few years. And if it's above zero, that, that's a good thing for us. If it's below zero, it's bad. And this has been our summer. Those LMPs have been through the roof. Simpa has, has had some serious concerns with some financial, the financial impacts of that, which the Commission is aware and has had some discussions about it. It's affecting Simpa's rates, and they are having some conversations about doing rate increases, because the LMPs that they've been seeing on the system have been not pretty. And eventually, that has to be passed through to the end consumer. Anyway, so LMPs, all you need to remember from that is it's, it's a financial metric on the wholesale market, which helps, is really a big cost driver for us as a utility, because it ends up impacting what we pay on the wholesale market. And as LMPs go up, we have to pay more.
I can't read the little, under the blue graph there. Are those months, or what are those?
Yeah, each, this is January 1st of 2006, January 1st of 2017. Usually, the LMPs are kind of on a, they'll do it on like a daily basis, kind of. I was more trying to just indicate the fluctuations, the volatility, and show how this last summer so far has been quite an outlier for us in terms of.
It looks like it's going back up.
Yes, it, it, there's been a lot of volatility. It, it has. And we're monitoring that, and Simpa is really looking at that closely to figure out what does that mean for today. I know through the early part of this summer, it's really hit them hard, because we've also been dealing with some things with Sherco to make sure that we have adequate coal supplies to get through next winter. And so, there's a lot of planning going on, and it's, it gets confusing. And that, that fluctuations make it, makes it hard to predict in terms of what we want to use for our cost estimates and our budget. Another definition that I want to go through, because as I get into the Simpa billing, this is going to be important, and it's the difference between coincident peak and non-coincident peak. Peaks, like I said, with the load shapes means what is the maximum load that our community sees at the substation? What's that maximum megawatt number? Every utility, their costs, the peaks are a major driver in their costs. Same, that happens with us, same is true for Simpa. Simpa, but everybody's costs are driven by their system peaks. So, our internal costs are driven by our system peak. Simpa's internal costs are driven by their internal peak. We may or may not peak at the same time. Again, like I mentioned, every customer is different, every business is different, every community is different. And so, the terms coincident peak and non-coincident peak come up, because the question is, what Simpa bills us for what we use when they hit their peak? And that may or may not be at the same time that we peak. And so, those are two different numbers. And again, when Blair comes up, and we start, I get into some cost allocations, and he's talking about non-coincident peak and coincident peak, that's why. One is a driver for us, one is a driver for Simpa. And the coincident peak is what drives our Simpa wholesale bills. And so, that's what we're billed on in our electric rates to them. And just the last point there, excluding purchase power, this is what I was getting to. Our internal costs are primarily, which is primarily for our infrastructure, our transformers, our feeder sizes, those are driven by our peak, not Simpa's. But our Simpa bill is driven by the time that Simpa's peak occurs. So, in the Simpa billing, there's really three main components. There's the energy charge, based on the kilowatt-hour. There's the monthly demand charge. We get, we get billed monthly on a calendar month basis from Simpa. Those are based on our peak during Simpa's peak, so that's our coincident peak. And then, there's a transmission charge, which gets set once a year. Well, it's whatever your peak, your, your maximum peak was within a 12-month period. And so, if you go higher than what you did in the, in the previous 12 months, that transmission charge will go up. And then, there's a thing called a ratchet, which I'll get into in a minute. But the three components of what's important, the energy, monthly peak, and then your annual peak. So, the energy usage I mentioned is measured at the city gate, which is our substation. So, it's, it's the energy that's delivered to the community. Simpa has two energy charges. We don't have this in our retail rates, but we do pay it on the wholesale side, which is Simpa will charge us an on-peak rate, which is Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., excluding holidays, will charge one rate. And then, they'll do an off-peak, which is everything else, 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Includes weekends, and then those holidays that are not included on the on-peak. So, there are two energy rates that we use. On the retail side, we've always kept one, just to keep it simple for customers. Simpa also has a cost adjustment that they put in place, which is really just the financial mechanism to make sure that Simpa's collecting what they need to cover their costs for the power purchase agreement that, that we're a part of. Reason I mention that is because there are conversations going on at the Simpa board right now. There's a couple of members who are pushing pretty hard to expand the cost adjustment, to handle the market volatility that we're seeing, to give Simpa an opportunity to pass on those costs easier than what they can now, which brings me back to that LMP chart, which means you see these fluctuations. Right now, for the Simpa membership, and something that we have given to our customers is, our customers aren't seeing that. They just have the rate, which then puts pressure on the whole rate discussion and rate increases down the road, rather than addressing it when it happens. So, it's just a question of what price signals and what allocations do you want to send to your customers to try to get them to help you manage the entire system better? So, you know, like I said, the only reason I mentioned the cost adjustment is because there are some internal conversations going on about expanding the use of that mechanism. And then, when you look at Simpa demand, there is the demand charge, which is based on our coincident peak or CP. It's the power draw that we have when Simpa sets its peak for that calendar month. That rate is $10.95 per KW, and it varies from month to month. I give you an example, put in context. Our peak that you'll see on here is around 14,000 kilowatts. So, let's put some numbers in context, 10 bucks, at 11 bucks per KW. And that's quite a bit of money each month. Then, the transmission demand charge, which is based on your annual peak, looks at what the maximum was for that 12-month period. That is billed at $2.74 per KW, and that's billed constant. So, you will peak, like so far this year, we peaked in June, and you'll pay that amount in June. But then, even if you don't hit it in July, you still pay that amount. And in August, and September, and January. So, that number stays. The man, the demand charge, like I said, you, you pay your monthly peak at 10.95 per KW, but then Simpa has a ratchet. And what that means is, if your monthly demand is at 100 KW, just to make the math easy, and say the next month, people just didn't use a lot, you only used 50 KW. Well, they put in a 74% ratchet, which means even though you only use 50 KW, we're going to charge you 74, because again, they have to recover their infrastructure costs. So, the graph that you see is, the blue line is our coincident peak for 2021. The, this orange line is our non-coincident peak. So, that's what we peak that each month with Simpa ratchets. The yellow line is our billed KW. So, as you can see, what happens to us is we're a bit of, we have a very peaky utility. We use a lot in the summer and not so much in the wintertime. So, in the wintertime, the ratchet kicks in, and utility has to pay more for wholesale power than what it's actually using. And that's because of the ratchet. And then, the gray line is that annual peak, which you pay regardless. It's based on your annual peak. And you can see what happened to us this, in 2021, is we had a huge peak. You know, COVID's messed everything up, it's really. It's really occurred with a lot of the projections and we saw a lot of odd things going on. And so coming out of 2020 and going into 2021, we saw a lot of demand come back on the system. And so we hit that number, and we're on the hook for paying that for the next 12 months. That's where that comes from. But it's just to give you an idea of where the cost, how the costs are being. So then as we look at what we're currently facing for the industry is, the market volatility, it's really been hitting everybody hard. We're seeing it on the wholesale market. A shifting in load shapes. And some of that was driven by COVID because we saw a lot of commercial load drop off. And as people work from home, we saw residential loads go up, and it's just shifted everything. And we're still recovering from a lot of that. But we're also seeing higher penetrations of electric vehicles. We're seeing higher penetration of air source heat pumps. People are using energy in different ways than they did five years ago. And if you go back to remember the water heater load shape where I made this average assumption for all this variation, the variations are shifting, so those load shapes are shifting. And we just got to make sure that we can keep those needs going forward. We're also seeing a lot more what's called distributed or dispersed generation. Those are your customer-owned standard PV systems. We have a dozen on our system right now. So we're seeing folks go to that more and more. That obviously has impacts on cost recovery because they're not now, they're not 100% us. They're taking energy when they can't generate it, which again is a whole new load shape. And we have to figure out how that fits in and make sure we get proper cost recovery because we still have to read their meters, we still have to provide reliable service on a moment's notice. And so those can get a little more challenging, and we want to make sure we cover our costs there. We're also seeing significant changes in the supply side characteristics. There's a lot of fossil fuel generation that's being retired. There's a lot of wind and solar coming on the system, which again has different performance characteristics. Being able to manage that and still meet demand instantaneously, it's just taking some work and some be able to manage that and getting all the ancillary services online that we can do to maintain power quality. And then we're seeing more and more increased vulnerability in our infrastructure. It's a combination of things. It's because of increased demands that we're seeing if we cannot accommodate and seeing some economic growth. And I apologize. As well as larger and more significant weather events. As we see climate change taking hold, we're seeing higher wind speeds. We're seeing increased moisture events, larger and longer heating spells. All of that is stressing the infrastructure, which is requiring that to be built in a more robust manner than it was even 10 years ago. Okay, it's not all bad news. We do have a lot of stuff going for us. One of it is a lot of increased data analytics through the AMI metering that we have put in place. Before, in the old way of doing billing, we got one reading a month. Somebody went out, read the meter, get a number, that was it. With AMI, we need 15-minute data. We can see how the loads are changing. We can respond to outages very quickly. It's giving us a lot of power and information that we can then use to make the system more streamlined and more optimized for what our needs are. So that's been a really good thing. That real-time monitoring of the system to just make it more efficient has been very helpful. And then you are seeing more and more products out there using advanced IT system to help control load, both by the utility and the customer. For the customer, if you think of the Nest thermostats, although folks are aware of that, you can use that to help control your air conditioning loads. There's more, it's called IOT, more providing the data from the utility, sending the price signals and having customers respond accordingly as to when do they want to turn on their dishwasher, when they turn on their air conditioner, based on the price signals that they see. There's some pretty advanced stuff going on in California. Not that I want to be Californian, because they have a lot of their own issues. But there's a lot of technology and our customer base is becoming more and more integrated with IT and being able to handle that kind of feedback. So that's opening up some opportunities in the market as well as those customers have an increased ability to handle technology and respond to information that we can provide. So those are all good things. It helps us manage the system in a much more nimble way.
When did you guys finish installing all the AMI meters?
Electric got done at the end of last year. The water nodes, the whole thing, China and all the China factories shut up. We just started getting shipments of the water nodes in last few weeks. And I think we got, if they're not all in, apparently they're all on their, we got a whole batch in and the rest are on their way. I've got the water department ready to try to push that out by the end of the year, fingers crossed. And so I would love to get into 2023 and be done with that project. So that's, you know, we're just talking about electric, but the AMI stuff on the water side is very helpful as well. Because again, you start getting load shapes, you get to see when people are using water and you can do leak identification and a lot of things.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's been a great project. Okay, so you take all of that. And Blair, we got to talk about rates. So with all that information, how can we allocate our revenues in a much more effective way to match what our expenses are? And we can do that through more complex rate structures rather than just a simple energy rate. We can start looking at a lot of different things. And that becomes important because again, our load shapes are changing. The assumptions that, I've been in the industry for 20 years, the assumptions that we've been using are just not true anymore. We are having to fundamentally reevaluate that. And as we do that, we want to allocate those costs in an appropriate way so people get the appropriate signals and connect accordingly. Those changing load shapes, like I mentioned, have been through the adoption of electric vehicles, increased beneficial electrification, which is being used for a lot of sustainability purposes because we can deal with a lot of the carbon emissions through electrification that we can't do through fossil fuel, like natural gas, gasoline, things like that. And then we're also seeing more distributed generation on the system, which is your customer-owned generation as that technology evolves too. But we can use the real-time feedback and billing that AMI provides with us, to better reflect what's going in the market. So people get the price signals and you don't end up with these perversions in the market because people are acting on incorrect information or incomplete information, is a better way to say that. So all utilities, as we look forward into rates, are considering a whole bunch of different factors. What is called a power cost adjustment, an energy cost adjustment, PCA, ECA, goes by a couple of different names. And that's because of the volatility that we're seeing in market prices and how do we send those price signals to our customers? A lot of our neighbors already do it, Princeton doesn't. Like I said, Simpah has a minor one. It's very minor, it's more of an accounting tool. They're looking at an option of doing more of a market-based PCA. And if that happens, that's going to be some questions for the commission to think about whether they want to do that as well. But a lot of utilities have been going down that path. And then because with just the information technology advances and the ability to use more and more of that, we come up with more rate classes. We can better segment our customers by load shapes so that cost allocations and revenues match better. So there's no cross-subsidization between residential and commercial and/or industrial and residential or whatever might be. It is what it is, people pave their way. And it will continue that shift to better match revenues with expenses. When they talk about more complex rates, what I'm talking about is a couple of things. Do more demand charges for more customers, looking at type of heat rates, looking at seasonal rates to address the market forces. It is just more expensive for us to purchase wholesale power in the summer than it is in the winter. So should that be reflected in retail rates? You have EV charging, which is not, in lots of cases, may be occurring overnight. How do you want to handle that? What's an appropriate cost allocation for that for a customer? Do you give them credit for that or not? There are some conversations about using EV batteries to help support the grid, where if you can interconnect it and you run into a real serious problem, you can drain the EV battery. Is that something folks want to do or not? There are a whole ton of questions about that. I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying, people are asking questions. And so it's really getting into kind of that time of use. And then, like I said, distributed generation is really making a compliment. And because the distributed generation is so different and with people taking, not paying into the system, but they're using the system as an insurance in case their system fails. Because if a PV system, if a hailstorm comes through and knocks out a PV system, all they do is they pull off a bus. And so we have to be ready at a moment's notice to meet their full load, even if we haven't met their full load for many years. What's an appropriate cost allocation for that? It's typically called grid access charges. But there are other cost recovery mechanisms to handle those kinds of intermittent loads that may or may not come on the system with or without warning. It makes it very hard to predict what to do in those circumstances. So it's something that we are looking at, well, that the industry is looking at. And I know several of my colleagues have already implemented a grid access charge for that exact reason. Okay, I hit you with a lot of stuff, very technical. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. I will be distributing these slides afterwards to everybody, so you can take a look at it, sleep on it. Feel free to call me, email me with any questions, I'd be happy to go through it. But in the meantime, I guess if there's anything kind of off, you know, off the top that people might have in terms of questions, I'd be happy to try to answer. Okay, if not, Mr. Chair, that finishes up my part of the presentation.
Thank you. Lock goes on behind the scenes that people never ever see or think about. So it's good that this presentation took place. It's hard to take it all in, but there's a lot going on. Blair, I'm sorry, you're up.
Hey, thank you. You know, Keith covered an awful lot of stuff there and really set the stage well for what I'm going to talk about. I'm going to probably refer back to some of the things that he brought up and mentioned quite a few times in his presentation. So what I'm here to talk about is the actual rate study. So that's a piece of work that our firm is hired to do on behalf of the utility. And I'll explain what that is and how we approach it, and then where we're kind of at and what, how things tie into what some of the things that Keith talked about as I go through. So first of all, the purpose and the process of a rate study, a couple of items here. So the overall goals for rate studies are listed there. I mean, obviously you need to stay financially viable as a utility. You have to raise enough revenue through your rates to be able to stay in business, pay all your bills. And that's kind of a fundamental thing. Second piece ties back to some of the things that Keith talked about, which is you need to make sure that customers are treated fairly. And I mentioned there, between classes and within classes. Now, what I mean by that is Keith mentioned you don't want to have your large commercial customers subsidizing residential or vice versa. You want to make sure each rate class pays their share of the, their fair share of the cost so that nobody's subsidizing anybody else. And then within that class, customers that use similar, or have similar usage care, pay the same amount of money. And so as we do this rate study, that's one of the things we look at. And then finally, as was mentioned earlier, pricing signals, that's kind of an economics term. What that means is we want to try to set rates at a level and in the right manner so that if it's costing you more in the summer, for example, you are also turning around and sending that signal to your customers. Hopefully they'll take that signal and say, okay, I'm going to use less electricity if I can. And, you know, to try to lower the cost. And so the pricing signal thing is an important piece of that. A rate study process, like I said, the same three things in every rate study I do, which I do quite a few, and that's all I do anymore is rate study. So those are the three items that we do. We look at what I call a cash flow or a financial model that looks at what does your level of revenue need to be to meet all your obligations? You have to pay operating costs, including Simpah power supply costs being the biggest one. You need to pay other salaries for your other workers. You need to maintain your system, all those kinds of things. You have to cover all those costs. You also have to cover the cost of any debt service. We talked a little bit, Keith talked a little bit about that. Talk more about that in a minute. You have to be able to pay those bills and so forth. So we try to figure out what is your level of revenue need to be to make this all work? Second is the cost of service study. That's a term that the electric utility industry uses, well, well utilities. And I'm trying to figure out what's a cost for each customer class to serve them? And then what is the cost for each customer based on how their usage characteristics are? And so we need to make sure that each of those classes pays their share. And then finally, we develop actual rates. So we'll end up with a rate schedule that we'll propose and your commission will look at and decide if they like or not. And then once we get to one that everybody is agreed to, that'll become your rate schedule that you will implement. And that's how you charge your customers. And as part of that, we look at what that impact is, to make sure we look at that, that we're not over damaging, if you will, one class or not. There was trying to treat people fairly all the way through this that I mentioned. So that's basically the goals and the process we go through. Keith talked a lot about this already. I'll mention this again in a couple of pieces. Some of the big picture influences on your particular utility are listed there. Obviously, the overall revenue level that we need to maintain or have here to make things work, that's influenced by your power spike cost primarily being 60 to 70% of your operating cost, but then also those capital improvements that were mentioned earlier. A whole bunch of infrastructure that needs to be done over the next 10 years. And so in order to do that, you can borrow some money to do it and finance it. And we need to integrate that all in, the overall picture, the overall revenue picture for the utility. And then also, as mentioned earlier as well, a couple of different times, we need to start figuring out how do we introduce time of use and seasonality into the next year? I've been doing this, Keith said 20 years, I've been doing this 35, actually more than 35 years. Going back to when I started, things were socialized and simple and easy, and there was no, nobody cared. And it was all just real simple. Well, that's all changed with the market, with the MISO market. The LMP pricing scheme and all that has changed all this. And so as more and more of that is driven down to you, we need in turn to then turn that around and somehow get our customers to understand that and react accordingly. And that's a big education thing. And we're going to propose making some steps in that regard. We're not going to jump in and price electricity hourly like it gets priced to Simpah. But we're going to start trying to move that way and hopefully educate your customers as you go. And now that you have an AMI system that do those kinds of things. And so as we go through this, we're going to talk about how we may make the first steps in that regard. So talk some general conclusions. Good news, I guess, your overall revenues, in other words, the amount of money that you're generating by your electric rates currently are generally at sufficient level. In other words, I'm not going to come in here and tell you you need to raise rates 20% on everybody. That kind of, that kind of message. Now, I've done that before some places and it's no fun. But thankfully, you planned ahead and made some good steps. And, you know, the level of revenue that you're currently at looks like it's going to be sufficient to do all the things that we need to do over the next 10, 10 years. However, I want to make caveat, the whole power supply thing that's happening out there right now will have some impact on that. So hopefully if things are reasonable and the changes aren't huge, you can make some small tweaks to revenues overall and be fine. We expect that. Months ago, I would have said we don't think we need any sort of revenue changes in the next 10 years with what's happening in the Simpah world and the market. You might not be quite as able to do that. But we're talking minor things, a couple percent every couple of years sort of thing, not big changes. And that will be the kind of thing you need to look at as you go. And you can tweak that as time goes by. But in general, you're in a good spot. And make note of your, since you're paying off your debt, your current debt, you'll be able to take on what I would call a reasonable level of debt to handle new capital improvements. You don't want to borrow too much. You know, borrowing money for an electric utility is how all utilities operate. But you don't want to go too crazy and get in a bad position. And I don't think you need to, you can handle this, my model, but it all shows that you can use the company that level of debt that would be required to make those capital improvements that we're talking about. And then the last part there on this slide is, as I mentioned, the cross-subsidization between classes. You don't want that to be happening, and thankfully it's not. Again, I've been in those situations where all of a sudden the residential class needs to see a rate increase of 20%, then your large commercial needs to drop to 20% or something like that, and those are not fun conversations to have. And thankfully, your rate cost of service study numbers show that you're in pretty good shape right now. A few tweaks, as I mentioned, there are a couple of minor shifts that we'll make as we build the new rates, but nothing major. So that's, that's a very good thing. So as I mentioned, proposed rates, we're going to, we're going to try to step into the, to the start of sending a signal that it does cost different at different times of the year. So I'm using the term seasonal rates or seasonality. So summer and winter, as you've mentioned, there's a huge difference in cost in the summer. Peaks that you set in the summer cost you year round. And so we're going to try to, or we propose anyways, some rates that would reflect that. A little higher rates in the summer, hopefully sending a signal to people, hey, if you can conserve, please do so. And vice versa, then a little bit lower rates in the winter. So to try to get that signals to, to, to start to be sent, people start understanding that and, and react to that. There was also mentioned the time of use kind of issue. We're not really at this point planning to, to propose time of use rates. But as was mentioned, there is a big difference in what the energy costs on peak versus off peak. And so if you're using energy during the day, it costs a lot more than at night. And while we're not proposing, at least at this point in this study, that we make a change and go to that, eventually that's where it's probably likely to, it's probably likely going to go. I mean, that's where the whole world is moving in, in electric, electric costs. It's especially important, as we mentioned, electric vehicles is a huge contributor to that. First of all, we need to make sure people do charge at night. You don't want them charging all their electric vehicles during the day and adding to our problem we already have with too high a peak. At the same time, if you do it off peak, there ought to be a way to sort of intercept that and make it cheaper for people to do it, you know, at night, which is what you want. So from those, when that penetration of electric vehicles becomes significant, we're going to need to make sure that we get those rates in place. And as, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we're going to try to, I'm going to propose to step into this and kind of do this incrementally, not all at once. Again, it's a huge education thing. People are not used to thinking about this. We need to start getting our customer base to think about it. Instead of jumping in and going crazy, we're going to kind of do it a step at a time, start the seasonality thing. Probably my recommendation would be some of your larger customers, there's a smaller number of them. Start with time of use for those customers at some point, and then eventually expand it to everybody. But that would take some time, and that would be on the schedule, you would decide, you know, when you want to do that. But for now, we'll just start with the seasonality piece. So the other, the last kind of, the last thing here is a few other practices that Keith mentioned, a few of these, we're going to try to clean up, I would characterize it, I guess I would say. And this was mentioned earlier, because we're going to try to start adding some customers to both the demand and energy rates that are just energy. That allows us to more closely match, recharge them with what they, what they pay, what the cost to serve them is. So those, those match up better. We're going to clean up some of the rate descriptions. You, you have a rate schedule that has a description of customer classes and who's in that class. We're going to propose some things to clean it up a bit, to fit a little better, I think. The other thing is the flat customer charge. So your residential and smaller commercial customers already pay a flat customer charge, but your larger ones don't. And traditionally, that charge is, is to, to offset the cost of sending a bill and having meters and having customer service staff and those kinds of things. And we think every customer should pay that as, as a flat amount every month to cover those costs. So, so we're going to, we're going to propose that for your larger customers as well. Demand ratchet, we've talked about in the simple world. You also have one as part of your rate schedule. Currently, we think there's better ways to do it than the way it's currently described. So we're going to try to make some changes there that I think your customers will appreciate and will better reflect what, what it's really trying to accomplish. And then we're going to propose a grid access charge that Keith mentioned about for those customers that have their own generation, so that you're not cross subsidizing. So that the people that have solar panels pay their fair share, if you will. And there's a way to do that, and we propose that we can do that as part of the study as well, so. Okay, so let's talk some specifics here. I think you should still see this. So this, this is a table here of, of how we're proposing to reclassify and redefine rate classes a bit. I'll kind of zip through it. It's, it's, it isn't overly interesting, I guess, if more interesting at the grandeur level when you start looking at this specifics. But so your existing rate classes are down on the left side of the, of the table there. You currently have a residential class, you have a small commercial, general service class, which covers three hundred plus customers. So that's most of your smaller customers. You've got a commercial slash industrial large general service class. And then you've got a commercial industrial large power service for your very largest customer. And there's, there's a hundred and one ways to defining classes, and none of them are exactly right. But we're proposing to clean up a few things and probably maybe, maybe tie it a little bit closer to what I would say the industry is doing elsewhere. And so we're proposing on the right side there, residential class, which is the same as your existing class. So nothing, nothing new there. We're going to define the small general service class of all customers up to twenty KW or twenty kilowatts. So again, that's, that's your smallest class, your smaller customers, your, you know, your downtown businesses kind of thing, the ones that aren't real big. Then we would have three classes that we would have both a demand and energy component or in the rate schedule. And that would be your large general service, which would be those between twenty and two hundred KW. An intermediate would be two hundred to five hundred. And then large power would be over five hundred. And all we're trying to do there is, is group customers in classes so that similar customers with similar load characteristics pay the same rate. That's what we're trying to do here. I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, you'd have a different rate for every customer because they all have different cost drivers. But we're not going to do that, obviously. So we're going to try to group them, and that's what we do in the classified customers. And so we're proposing to make those changes that you see there. So this really didn't turn out anywhere near, but I, well, if I'm, this doesn't show up very well on the small screen. So listen, you're going to have to look at it when Keith sends it, pick the slides here. And I apologize for that, I thought this would show. What I proposed here is an existing rate schedule and proposed rate schedule. And I'll describe what's up there. Hopefully those posts can make it so you can get it real carefully. On the left side is your existing rates. And on the right side is, is proposed rates that we're currently proposing. So let's talk about residential. Currently, your rate is a fifteen dollar a month flat charge plus an energy charge per kilowatt hour of twelve point four five cents. Kilowatt hour, and it's the same year round, no matter what month, no matter what time of day, same charge. And that's, and that's, you know, that's the way it is just about everywhere, has been that way forever. And that's kind of a historical way of doing it. As you could see, if you could see what I'm proposing for residential is that we're proposing a different rate in the summer than in the winter. But we have the same customer charge, essentially the same value with sub a dime, I think is all it is, per month. But the energy charge would be higher in the summer, as you would expect, because that's when the costs are higher.
Blair, if I can, and you're defining summer as four smaller months.
Yes, so it's the same months that Simpa does, which I think is June, July, August, September, right? So it would, it would match up with the simplest higher cost month, if you will. So instead of twelve, twelve and a half cents, which you're currently paying year round, in the summer, it would go up to thirteen point seven cents roughly. So, you know, a higher, higher amount, not clearly higher, if any higher roughly than you're currently charged in the summer. But in the winter, eight months of the year, so actually, actually twice as many months, it would actually drop. You'd have a lower number at, right at twelve cents. But it would be eleven point nine nine cents. So, so you can see by what we're doing there is we're trying to send that signal that somewhere it's costing more. And hopefully people take that signal and, and adjust usage shift, you know, in a first world. And by, by charging a little bit more in the summer and a little bit less in the winter, you go trim a little bit of the summer usage. It's kind of what we're trying to do with the pricing. Small commercial customers is the next segment there, and it's the same story. Currently, you have a flat customer charge plus an energy charge that doesn't vary. And we would change that to a slightly higher charge and a slightly lower winter charge, same kind of concept there. So in sending that signal to the customers to try not to use as much energy in the summer. And then last part is the larger customers. Your customers are charged at the demand charge as well, then they're in charge. If you recall the discussion on Simpa, the issue with your cost is two different pieces. One is the time of use, the energy piece that, that, that varies, but we're not going to deal with that so much this time. What we're going to deal with is the seasonality piece of it. And, and the demand piece, the demand ratchet that Simpa has is what drives that cost. And so what we're going to do, and we're going to split the demand charge. And instead of, instead of having the same demand charge for each month like you currently do, we're going to change it so that the summer demand is higher than, than the winter demand. Again, same concept, trying to send a signal to customers that the, the summer usage is what's costing them money through the, through the Simpa situation. And so that's the same really for all, for all customer classes that pay a demand charge. Higher winner, or higher summer charge, lower winter charge. If you look carefully at the energy charge that you probably can't see, right now, the energy charge for your commercial industrial general customer is seven cents a kilowatt hour. And you'll notice that, that in my world, in my proposed rates, we're dropping that a bit down to five point six cents. And, and the reason for that is because that really is more reflective of what your cost of, of electricity is. Energy, even though the summer, it's not true, energy is higher in the summer because of what's happened out in the natural gas world. But, but actually, generally speaking, before this year, energy is really pretty cheap. Wind is cheap, natural gas is cheap, all those things that produce energy is, is, has been low, lower cost. And so what's high cost is the demand piece. And so, so I'm, I'm making a bit of a, a change there in my proposed rate to reflect that as well. So so then that, that's the, that's, that's the rate schedule I'm proposing now. Question is what, that all doesn't matter much, what does it really mean? So that's what we need to talk about next, is what, what it means. And this is the table that shows that, again, if you could see it. So this is a table that is, covers the residential usage. This is the summer, so this is summer usage. If you look at the table and analyze it close enough, what it does is it takes usage level. In other words, if you, if you use so many kilowatt hours a month, you can go into this table and say, what does it cost me today versus what's going to cost me at the new rates? In your situation, the summer usage for your residential customer, the average customer uses seven hundred and sixty-five kilowatt hours a month. So that's, that's in bold, kind of halfway down the table there. So if you follow that table across, if you look at it today, that customer in the summer that paid a hundred and ten dollars and twenty-four cents would be as well for about fourteen point four one seven kilowatt hour. That's what his average cost would be. With the, the proposed rate, that I'm proposing, again, with a higher summer rate, that would jump up to one hundred and nineteen point eight three. About fifteen point six six cents, about an eight point seven cent increase for about nine and a half dollars per month per customer. So that, you know, that, that, that's significant interest, that's, that's, that's an increase, so that's, that's not great. But recall, that's only for four months. And if we go to the next table, this is the winter usage. And if you go in here and look at that, and the average user uses five hundred and thirty-five kilowatt hours a month, you'll see that, that, that these are negative numbers if you could read them. And so again, we're lowering the winter rate, even though we're raising the summer rate, we're lowering the winter rate. And there's eight of these months. So, but most customers would see it's a little bit higher bill in the summer, but a little lower bill in the winter. If you mash it all together, that the total would be maybe an increase of a buck or a buck fifty a month. Be really relatively minor. If you look at the whole twelve month, again, that varies a lot based on your music level. But yeah, the point being, in the summer, the rate, the cost would go up, but in the winter, it would go down. And that's what we're trying to, you know, we're trying to send that, send that signal. Apologize for my throat. So the next, the next table, this is for the small general customer class. All the details here, same story. In the summer, their costs will go up a little bit, about seventeen dollars a month, from one hundred and fifty-five to one hundred and seventy-two for the average customer in this class. But in the winter, it would go down by about three dollars a month. So again, you have eight of those months and only four of the other ones mashed together. And there'd be, overall, it would be a slight increase, but not very much, if you look at the total picture. And again, it varies where you're at in the overall table as far as what your usage level is. But this is, this again, you know, describes and shows the concept of higher summer costs, lower winter costs. Trying to get that, that message set, that. So those two classes are the bulk of your customers, your residential and small commercial classes. They're, you know, by far and away the biggest number of customers. But you do have larger users that are in the other, the larger class. And so we've got a few examples in here for those. Again, it's really difficult to see this, but this is an actual customer showing twelve months of usage here. I don't have the customer name on here, fact that I don't remember what it is anymore, it doesn't matter. I want to show that, it doesn't matter who the customer is. But this is a real customer, real load cost data. There's a few things I want to point out here in this table. See, I'm calling this a customer that has a load factor. But Keith talked about load factor. We like to see high load factors. In other words, if you turn something on, you keep using it, you don't turn it on or turn it off and leave it off because they're costing a lot of money to serve those customers and don't have the revenue to come in if you don't set your rates right. So this is a, this is a customer that I would call is a good customer, a good load factor customer. Look at the column here, right in the middle, it's called load factor. And if you go down to the bottom, see their average load factor is seventy-four percent. So that's really good. I mean, that's, that's a good number. Hundred is perfect, nobody's there, you know, they get to a hundred. You know, this average would be more down in the forty to fifty percent range. This one's definitely in the seventy percent area, so this is, this is good. Examples of those customers would be, you know, convenience stores or grocery stores, customers that, you know, have coolers and things that run all the time. That, those are, those are good customers, if you will, because the amount of infrastructure and so forth that you put out there and serve them gets used all the time. And, and, and not one throw out and off, they're just kind of on. So, so a few things, it's again, hard to see these, but three, three others I wanted to point out. First of all, there's a, there's a column called existing customer charge. And if you look at it, there's nothing in that column, so you don't have a customer charge for them. You have a minimum charge concept that, that is a little bit different from what I normally see occurring. So this customer doesn't pay anything in that, in that column today. The, in the proposed customer charge column, you can see it's a forty-five dollar a month charge. So that's, that's what the flat amount will be, covering metering and sending mail and having customer service and so forth. So that's the first thing is bringing in a customer charge. Then the, the other thing to note is that this customer, if you look at the bottom line, if you could look at this table, your very bottom right number, it's a negative six percent. This customer with a good load factor would actually see a decrease in their cost of six percent on the new rates. And that's because, if you think about it, an increasing demand charges and lowering energy charges. And so that benefits people with good load factor. And that's, that's appropriate. That's, that's really kind of the way it should be. And because that's what the signal is to you, is when you buy from Simples, it's sort of the same thing. So, so that's, that's one thing to notice here is that a good load factor customer will benefit from this. And we're setting that signal, which is appropriate. Um, so that's, that's one thing to notice here is that a good load factor customer will benefit from this and we're setting that signal, which is appropriate. Final thing to note, if you looked at this, January's at the top and December's at the bottom and. You look at the numbers, you can see in the winter months, the January through April is timeframe, May. There's a decrease in their cost as well as in October through December, part of the, the table. But in the summer, there's either a smaller decrease or an actual increase. Again, that gets back to the fact of doing seasonal rates, and then you're going to have a higher demand charge in the summer, so. But looking at that table and kind of thinking of those concepts, which really shows up, shows up in that table. Um, this customer is another real customer, so with the average load factor, I mentioned earlier. Seventy-four percent was a good load factor, this person, this customer here at forty-two percent load factor, so. Closer to average, you know, not, not great, not bad. If you looked at this table again and kind of looked at the, what the impacts would be. Overall, this customer would see a slight increase in costs of two percent. Your rate structure. But that was very month to month, again, in winter months, they'd see a negative to a lower cost because of demand charging lower. Summer, it would be much higher because of the higher cost demand in the summer, so. All of these customers are going to really vary depending what their load pattern is and how they use electricity, but we're going to send that signal. Help us out here if you want. Use energy and power in a way that's, that's a helpful cost like the. And here, here's kind of the, the worst case scenario, if you will, somebody with a low load factor. This is a twenty-seven percent load factor, so that's kind of low end. These are people that, you know, require larger facilities to serve, but then don't use them very efficiently or effectively. And so those kind of people, we need to make sure we cover revenues from appropriately. So this particular customer would see an increase of of seven percent, uh, overall for the new rates. And again, if you went and looked at this and looked at the numbers, you would see they're going to see an increase in every month because the load factor is not very good. More of an increase in the summer because of highs, so. If you like numbers and like to look at this, if you look at these tables, you can see that and see what's, how, what the effect of what we're trying to accomplish is. The, this is an intermediate power customer, uh, so this is the next. Uh, largest group of customers, there aren't very many of these, fewer than ten. Same kind of concept, if you looked at the, at the table and 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 cranked out the numbers and so forth, you would see that in the summer months, you'd see a bigger increase. Uh, either decrease or a slight increase in winter months. And the same thing with the large power, it would be very largest customers, those over five hundred kilowatts. Uh, and this happens with a good load factor, so. They're going to see actually no change, a zero percent change uh, in their, in their um, their cost. But during the months, they would see some months as a decrease and some months as an increase, but overall zero, so. What we're trying to do here again is shifting some things around that, that try to set our. Rates and get the sense right, signal and it's, it's all. So, to kind of wrap it up, here's a few other things that we're going to finish up with that we haven't had done yet, we're going to do, and that's a grid access charge for those that. Yeah, install solar installation. You'd explain that, essentially what we're trying to do is that somebody is on your system or generates their own. They still use your system and still need to pay for a part of it, and so. We're trying to do, this is a concept that actually was developed in Minnesota. And kind of all the utilities in Minnesota are starting to use it and and this video. Ask muster at the public utilities connection and so forth, and it's fair to those people, it doesn't take advantage of them. But also spirit to your other customers who don't, who can't afford to put a solar panel in, you're not making them pay for someone else's. Bill to put that solar panel, so. Well, well, now that we have the cost of service numbers, we can develop that pretty easily, so that's what we'll do yet. Um, you've got some reserve accounts and different things that, that as I've looked at this, I've got some ideas on. Might want to tighten some things up there, how they're applied and what they're used for. Suggestions to the commission I'll make, you don't have to take them if you don't want, but there are things that I, that I will bring up, uh, that I might suggest in that regard. Um, as well as rate stabilization function is a complicated rate stabilization calculation that gets made that. It overly complicated is my view, and that, and that fund could be used. A better way to help keep customers from having rate increases and ways of doing that that I'll recommend. And when the energy adjustment piece, as Keith mentioned as well, depending on what somebody else with their, you know, they, they implement a rate on. Well, that's really, really quickly what, what I have to talk about, I guess I could try to answer questions. With a general concept, main setups, and you know what I was trying to do here, using all the stuff that Keith explained. Really, was a really good stuff because all that flows into the look that I'm doing. Hopefully aggressive and things that he had said that are impacted and killing, so. Happy to try to answer questions or discuss things further, or do you have any?
Well, actually, I have a question. So you talked a lot about um, your load factors and. You know, you went through at the end of your presentation how, you know, a low load factor is hard to deal with, so how do you increase a load factor? Without increasing your energy use to lower the cost, how would a customer do that?
Well, so if you increase your load factor, you will, you'll pay more dollars, but your cost, average cost per unit will drop. So, how do you do that? Frankly, some people can't, I mean, it depends what your process is, you know, it just, it just is what it is. Um, but we're setting, we want to send the right signal to you to do that if you can, so.
If, if, if I can, um, for like your residential customer, small commercial, it's high efficiency air conditioner. If you can reduce your peak, um, you're still. We, we do want to be careful that we're not what's called valley filling, which is like you said, just increase your energy consumption during times when you don't need it. So the idea is to address that peak, and you can do that through uh, controlling your air conditioner, putting in a higher sear, higher E E R. Uh, HVAC unit, um, turning down your thermostat, we will still be doing our, our peak alerts, which is when we're hitting our peak. Um, turning those down during, you know, when it's super hot out, you don't need to still maintain your, your house at seventy, if it's set at seventy-four. That's going to reduce your peak, that's going to increase your load factor. Um, commercial customers can do that just like residential's can. Um, when you're looking at manufacturing processes, um, a lot of it just comes to that energy efficiency equipment, spending a little bit extra money. Get something that operates very efficiently, um, will really help address that, that peak. Exponent, especially when you're dealing with stuff that's related to weather, which is really what's driving a lot of this. High efficiency air conditioners would be a big one.
I, I didn't know, so I'm thinking about your bigger customers that are turning on a machine that. You know, is drawing a lot of, a lot of energy from it.
Well, I, I, I mean, I can give you an example, I worked with a, a hospital in Minneapolis many, many years ago, uh, and and they, their maintenance guy. Was testing out their chillers on a monthly basis. Well, every fifth day of the month, he would come down and they had thirteen chillers, it's a huge hospital. Turn them all on, make sure they work, turn them all off, then he went about his business. Set his peak every month on the fifth because of what he did. Took us a lot of work, understanding what he was doing, went to him and said, you know, rather than turning on all thirteen at one time, he had turned one on. Turn it off, turn the second one on, turn it off, cut their peak tremendously, thousands of dollars a month, just through operations. And so when you get into manufacturing, there are a lot of operational issues. That are available, that people just don't think about because we've never sent them the price signals. And the way the industry is going is, we want to start sending them the price signals, so they start asking those questions, because when they have a financial incentive to do something. Americans are innovative, I mean, they'll find ways to save a buck. And and they, they do, uh, so there are opportunities, each customer is going to be unique, uh, we have a great. Energy services representative, Nancy Kelly, which the commission knows about, works with our customers on their process. And I'm fully confident that she would be able to help them identify opportunities for savings. But if we don't send the price signals, they never ask the question, that, that's the dilemma we've, we've had a lot.
I guess that's, that's what I was getting at, how do you? How do you create that huge demand, stop creating that huge demand without changing anything?
And a lot of it is just staging equipment rather than just turning everything on at the same time. You can do a lot with just staging.
Yeah, I think, uh, we've got to start with education, you know, because, you know, we have all been educated, just turn things on. But now we have to start educating them, you know, when, when we, the best time to turn them on and off is. That, you know, if I'm reading you right, it's, it's a whole different way of looking at it, now that we're looking at load shape. I mean, trying to educate our customers about. When's the best time to run, to run that equipment, waste, turn, turn your hot water heaters on at night. Use it, shut them off during the day and use the hot water, or, you know, for larger industries, maybe there's different things that they could. You know, process during the, during the evening hours and, uh, you know, I don't know, everybody's going to be different, I think. That's where we really would like to work with, like if you guys are, as you guys are working with new people coming in the industrial part. Is just, you know, talking about those things, like how can we help you achieve lower energy costs, you know, I think. Now Keith gets excited about that stuff, so, uh, we got a great resource for that, I know, um. You know, that like Glenn Bell crap coming out, it'd be really nice to, to really go over stuff like that with them. I know Comexis already charges more in the summer than they do winter, so they're already kind of sending that signal there, we're just, you know.
East Central does as well.
It should be nice if we, if we're less expensive than Comexis. For a commercial, I mean, that, that's, that would be awesome, you know. We can achieve that, but that, we might go, at least imagine, at the very least, it will.
So, did I pick up that rates, would rates be going up or? When you get a hold of the commission, you're sending information to your commission, that's not rates actually going up. Were you going to keep your rates, I mean, summer and winter still?
So, well, we'll recommend the commission and they'll decide, and they have to, they have to kick that aside, but. Our recommendation would be going from a flat rate to summer winter rate, so, you know, summer goes up, winter goes down, so. Overall, it's a lot of wash, you know, so. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, there's going to be some slight shifts, uh, and 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 then again, the larger customers, the whole concept of the load factor does play in. Some of it, it's, some will get hurt a little bit, nobody's going to see a big swing, any sort, but, but, you know, it's going to make a difference in. How we set those rates and, so, well, yeah, we'll have that conversation, just look at all that.
Yeah, I mean, what, what you're saying, you know, that it's possible that overall, if they, if that signal gets. If that message gets received, that overall it could, it could go down, be, or being more energy conscious in the summertime during those four. Months, which lowers, if you seen with Keith's presentation, it lowers the cost to the P U C. Right now, we're absorbing that cost, you know, without being able to pass that on, and there's no real incentive for people to conserve, you know, it's the same rate. Other than, you know, their bill will go up, but there's no, they don't realize that overall it's costing them more money throughout the whole period. So this way we could get that message across.
So am I going to some, to this system? Um, in essence, you're helping the whole, the whole system, the whole grid. Right, is that the whole purpose of, of all of the, these companies to do this?
I, I look at it, and, and, you know, I, I guess Clark can give his opinion, I look at it as being more transparent. And where our expenses are and, and trying to match up revenues to send the appropriate price signals. Uh, so that you don't have people who are acting in ways that are really un-economical, uh, to dance. If we can send the proper signals and then people adjust to that, ultimately what happens is that helps us reduce. Our costs across the board, and 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 that's a good thing. I, you know, just like with the summer where I set out the, the peak notices, uh, to try to keep our costs down and hopefully get people to turn things off. Fact is, most people don't, they don't respond to that because it doesn't, they don't, there's no financial benefit.
Okay, then the other, other companies, uh, you mentioned, East Central and have they had success? In educating the, you know, people to go with, to, to do that?
Oh.
At what's been, they, you know, they thought it was successful?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure how I would define success, they've done it, uh, all the utilities, uh, have, I shouldn't say all. I gotta say, like, everyone that I look at.
Yeah.
Have already gone in here, this is the way the industry is evolving, and it's transparency and cost is really what we're looking at. And and we can't expect our customers to help us keep rates low if we don't send them a signal and then encourage them. Through financial mechanisms to take actions that benefit the area and help keep that under control. And and so, we're not by any means with what Blair's proposing, leading on this issue. You know, and if anything, I would say we're, we're probably a little late to the game on this.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, that's okay, it, the way our rates were set up, it served us for the time that it was, a- as Blair mentioned. There's not a lot of shifting that he's doing, I mean, we are generally right where we should be. The, we're just suggesting that, um, the, the, the commission consider taking that next step to, to send a signal to both to say. Hey, just so you know, summer usage is what's really driving your rates right now. And and the only, the, the best way to really capture people's attention is to send that as a basic. That's, that's what Blair and I are suggesting. But as far as uh, success of other utilities do it, I, I guess all I can say is they just did it. Uh, there will be questions, they're always hard, customers will get that bill, uh, you know, I see one Rochester post on their Facebook every summer. Uh, because they have the same thing, call in and say, oh my God, you increased your rates, well, no, we didn't, it's the same rate, it's just you're using more. And during a more expensive time, um, and and so there, there will always be constant education that we have to give folks. But as they learn how we operate, they will adjust. And so the idea is to eventually adjust that load rate, so it is cheaper for everybody across the board, so the next time we do a rate study. And load shapes will probably be a little bit different and we can help moderate. Costs at that point too, this, this is a, just an ongoing evolution, I think, that you're seeing in, in the market. And most customers are, are already used to it, just we haven't done it yet.
Must be nationwide then, too.
Uh, yeah, there's a, I mean, there, there's a whole slew of different rate structuring schedules, but there, the, the, the idea that there's just one electric rate. All year, every hour of the day, just is, is disappearing.
So you're talking about time of use and and someday, sounds like everybody will have a different rate for different times of the day.
I think that's where the industry is going, yes.
How long before you can start comparing if the bills now to what it would be? Or you can start saying, all right, from eight in the morning till ten o'clock at night is one thing, and then afterwards. Is a lower rate because it costs simple la, or it costs you less because it costs simple less.
Correct.
How long before you could compare an actual bill to a hypothetical bill? Using time of use?
You've got A M I and Blake, sorry.
Yeah, we, we could do that now.
Yeah.
Um, but time of, uh, what, what Blair and I are suggesting is the time of use is, is a much bigger step. We, we want to start with the seasonality, that, that, that's pretty easy for folks to understand, let them get used to that. Eventually get to that time of use, but with the A M I data, because we have consumption, we have fifteen minute readings on every electric here in town. We could do that analysis. And 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 say if we went to a time of use rate and it was structured this way, what would be the cost comparison of the bills?
There might be, there may be people and businesses in town that would be. I don't know what the right word is, but would be interested in doing that even if there wasn't an immediate cost effect. But if they're saying, hey, I can, I can overall reduce. Power usage, if I can just shift my power use different times, they may still do that if they're given that information.
Right, what some people are doing with that is, I mentioned I O T equipment, uh, you can go buy dishwashers that are programmable. And buy clothes washers and dryers that are programmable to run at two in the morning, uh, to take advantage of that, that kind of thing. Um, I don't know of any in Princeton, but, um, I, I, I have, I have seen that technology, uh, being talked about in other areas. Um, so yes, eventually, uh, I, I think that is where we're going. Blair and I are just simply suggesting that we should walk before we run and that seasonality would be a, a good first step towards that direction, in that direction.
So if you raise to the recommended proposals, when would you put it in place? Are we talking January one?
Yeah, that would be our thought. That would be, you know, up to the commission. But we, we did put this schedule in place for January first.
So we have an eleven million dollar infrastructure proposal. And so you're, what you're saying, it can't fly that pretty quick and will be, what you're saying is we're okay, we don't need to increase rates because of that.
I believe that is. Borrow all the money for it, spread that, those payments on over fifteen years or whatever we decide.
So that eleven million should not affect.
It currently looks and part of that, it's good. That's back to the old Simba rate plan going forward and some reductions in their rates coming fruition. If that doesn't happen, then that correlation is good.
And so if we get, and then also talking about the, our rate stabilization fund, our reserves. If we do get some increase from this recent fluctuation, I mean, did you look at that as part of your study? Like, can we absorb some?
Yes, rate fluctuation. That's, that's exactly how I'm going to propose to use that fund is that when those things happen, you just take the funds out of that in that current year, you know, to minimize the impact of that and not have to pass it on if you can. If it's not, you know, if it's too big, you're going to have to do something. If it's small enough, we can borrow, take some money out of that fund, fly it in this current year. And then hopefully next year, if I move away, I'll put back in here and just kind of use that as you will.
Did you look at the possibility of us not, if we maybe make those changes for summer and winter, but make it so it's basically a net break even? What kind of shape would we be in then?
So I'm, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming either way, even if you didn't do the seasonal thing, the same revenue that we need to generate is the same. We generate the same revenue, which is how we do it. That just X many dollars is what we need. We didn't talk seasonality, we didn't get the same dollars. If we do, it's the same number. It's just how we collect it.
So that rate proposal was really not.
Correct. In, in total revenues, in total revenues, that's correct. Yep, yep.
So we're not looking at a rate increase, we're looking at just changing.
Right. How it's, yeah.
I figured it out. It's actually going to cost me more.
I, I do think.
Depends on maybe if you turn things down some. I know for me, I'll think about it.
In the end, if we're currently looking at something like a one percent increase in 2023, it's just a very nominal.
It'd be less than that.
And, and the, the commission knows this. The Simba board last month approved a, a rate increase up to 10% effective November. Well, Blair and I talked about it and, and, and given all the unknowns, he actually factored in a five percent. He was assuming Simba's rates to us on November first of this year go up five percent and that's included in his analysis. If Simba goes to 10, he's right. We're probably going to have to just tweak a couple of things. If the five doesn't come to fruition, even though, if I had to bet on it, I would say it's going to be five or higher. Well, then we would tweak it the other way.
So we could absorb a five percent case without passing that on or rate pay.
Well, we are looking at a, a very, very modest increase, but yes, we, because of, of, of how we're paying off the old bonds and, and as he said, we're, we're looking at some reasonable infrastructure future bonding.
Hopefully if this is just a flip, like, like what you know, it's, it's coming back and we can just absorb with our rate stabilization funds and it goes away.
Yes, on the whole, because that's what Blair, Blair is looking at in terms of our whole net, total net revenues. Yes, there is not any, any significant change.
There will be some increase in revenue coming in based on charging the large customers, that customer charge per month that aren't currently paying it. That'll be a little bit of additional.
Well, but remember their energy is going down at the same time. There, there, there's a lot of competing influences here. When, when Blair went through into his cost of, of service study, again, he found that there was not much cross-subsidation across rating classes. So on the whole, each rate class is staying right where it's at. Yes, as with anything, every customer is unique. You're probably going to have some a little bit higher and some a little bit lower. But in the anger here, which is how he looks at the data, it's not. But it, what it's doing is it's, it's taking those costs and it's allocating them in those areas, which are, are the biggest impacts on what our expenses are. And so it's sending those markets. That, that's the approach that, that, that we're proposing.
So what, under that proposal, would our, the city's largest customer's rate go up or down? My largest one. So, I don't know if you know who that is. I mean, I don't want to, yeah, maybe the top six. Are they going to go up or down?
Have that here in front of me. Remember if that, I don't remember.
I, 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 I don't. I, I.
It's right around zero. So if it goes up a little bit, if it's, if it's down.
It depends on your load shape again.
I will be happy to provide the commission that.
I mean, I don't want to bring up names.
People forgot all the information.
I just want to, if I have a commercial customer call me and say, what's this going to look like for me? I would like to have that answer. And I'm sure, I'm sure you guys want to have that answer. If you have someone looking at purchasing land or.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's really important to, and I know everyone here understands the value of the dollar, but when we first heard about the cost being 11.7 or something like that and it was just, all right, so, you know, we, we have to keep moving forward and bring our infrastructure together all in one system, which we're doing. And Keith, I don't know if you remember or not, when I said, just because we're having a rate study doesn't mean the rate goes up. And this is proving my point. So I, as Keith said, we're hearing this information at the same time you guys are. I didn't know that the 11 million was going to be covered with this. That, that's huge. I mean, it's absolutely, there was a whole lot of reaction here, but I'm dropping up and down.
I was too. I'm like, did I hear that? I mean, you know, and thanks to, you know, Keith and our predecessors too, for, for really running a tight ship and, and you know, in the past and, and so, yeah.
Some key dates just to, to throw out there. We haven't had a rate, a rate study done since 2018. And then we haven't had a raise, a rate increase since 2019. So I think that says something for what we're doing.
Well, 19 was even a four percent decrease prior. So we're not even, our rates are not even, our revenue collections are not back even what they were in 2018.
So you look at other businesses and why not and, you know, who's able to do that? So there's some interesting information there that I'm not sure that the, the rate payers may not understand or even know about.
They're only going to care if the rate goes up.
They'll mildly care if they go down, but they'll, people are interested.
Essentially, our rates are the same as they were in, what, 2015 then? If we had a rate decrease.
I don't even know.
Yeah, I guess if you, if you look at inflation rates in 2015 or so, we're way out of the curve, which is a good thing. So hopefully we can stay there and hopefully we can continue to do that. Hopefully if, by maybe getting some energy conservation going during the summer, that can help keep our costs down and we can just keep going there. So, and then, you know, I look to it when, when Rochester is all Simba. You know, that's, you know, we don't, maybe don't have to keep up circle three. We've got some other things that could affect our rates staying lower too for costs or, for homes, energy. Prices don't go crazy. Natural gas and coal. Yeah. No, I think, I mean, I would just like to say like, one of my goals is, is to have the same or better rate than our closest, our closest electric company. I hate to say competition because it's kind of an outway, but I would, you know, that's, that's what, that's what, I just want to say that along with this meeting.
And I think that's exactly the goal that you should all have. It's just to be that kind of competitive.
I'm not going to speak for these guys, but, but I think we're on the same page.
We are on the same page. There's been a lot of really good, even with Greg Hanson. Great communication amongst us during our meetings. Nobody ever has to walk out of there and say, yeah, I should have said that or I should have, you know, it's, I'm, I'm real happy to be working with these people. I enjoy this position quite a bit.
Man, I'm new as a commissioner, but I've got some history with the whole picture. We're still, even though we're, you know, probably going to be looking at some kind of rough ground here rate wise, through no fault of ours, of course. We are proceeding with the long-term longevity of our, of our utility. We need some major upgrades and we're not going to set that aside because, oh, it looks a little rough. We made a whole lot. No, we do what we have to do. Find out, find a way to do it. It's easier to maintain if the thick lap is broken.
Okay, so we're kind of pushing on to close to two hours here. So if there are no more questions, last chance for questions, anybody staff?
Well, and again, I just would say, if anybody does afterwards, just call, email, text, whatever.
Whatever works. Be able to find your number somewhere.
Because I know, well, years ago, I, I'm, we got a rate study from East Central, Kynexus. We were on there. And I had it for quite some time. I mean, I carried it with me to show people, hey. And I would like to have one of those again.
A rate comparison.
Comparison, rate comparison. Cause I remember the seasonal, you know, on there and they weren't bad, which is.
I remember that. I remember that. It was a comparison of a typical P, PUC bill and one from Excel. I remember that comparison and they were, I remember it was Connie that presented that. And she drew some, illustrated there that there were many hidden costs too that we're unaware of with that bill too.
Actually, just a couple of days ago, I had a call with Simba. They were, we were talking about that exact thing. I, I gave them a bunch of data from Princeton. They pulled in Excel, Heartland, a, a bunch of co-ops across the state. And again, we're always right in there, right where we should be.
Yeah, I need one of those. That was a cheat sheet.
Yeah. So simply, I, I, I'm trying to, to get Simba to come out with, with something. So that way it's not just us saying it, it's somebody else saying, no, they looked at the data and that here's the result.
Oh, I see. And they're named after it.
And this is exactly why I, I thought it would be good to have Blair from DGR come in. Have him kind of go through the numbers and say, what do you see in the data? So we're that, you know, we're not just all tooting our own horn. Let's have somebody, an independent third party agent come in, look at it, make some suggestion. Cause ultimately, I know this commission, they just want to do the right thing. And, and, and the only way to do that is to give them information and a couple, a bunch of different sources. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff that they're going to talk about, they're going to have to sit through. But it's better to have those conversations and, and not have those.
You know, just to add to that, I think to have a rate comparison is pretty easy with residential. But when, when you get asked about a rate comparison for commercial, that's one that's going to get into the, the load shaping. So those aren't easy questions to answer. So send them to Keith. Because he likes to work on, he like, like you said, that's what makes him excited. So. But you can't, it's not a simple answer. Like, well, if I put my business in, you know, Baldwin Township and I'm on Kynexus, it, it is, what's the rate comparison? Well, what's your, you know.
What's your business?
What's your load shape?
And their bills would say what their load shape is.
Which is why when that comes up, I do say, well, can I get a year's worth of bills? So I need to see what that load shape is. What's their demand month to month, their energy month to month? What does the seasonality do to all of that? That's how you do a true apples hat.
I'd just like to ask the council, do you find this helpful, useful?
You know, it's, it's information that I would have never digested otherwise. So, you know, you think about it and actually the, the time of use metering kind of thing is, I think, is what the future is going to be. And I know Kynexus is already starting to roll that out in a few sample projects. So I think you would find people just would feed it right up and just go crazy with it.
Someone's going to develop an app for the house.
So you're, you're going to end up with a lot flatter load, which is what the goal would be. Lunch tomorrow with Tom. It's good stuff. Very good stuff.
I'd like to take an opportunity to thank you Keith and Blair for coming. Really important. Thank you.
Thank you to our commission.
If there's any other questions, can I agree agenda or do I not? I was, I was just going to say, you can really go a long way with this with your customers. I mean, you can really be a great, this can be a great PR tool for you. I mean, you can, you, how you approach it, you know, that you can save money and that hits people right away.
And just being responsible.
Just make you look good.
People want to be a manager.
That's all I have to say. Second? Almost in favor, say aye. They'll make that for us.
What's your name? Second, all in favor? Thank you all. Very good.